The clerk for this hearing. This hearing is being recorded via Zoom and will be available afterwards through a link on the San Francisco Public Works website. Except publicworks.org. As this is a virtual hearing, there is no sign in sheet. So if you would like to receive information about the results of this hearing, please send an email to the email address listed on the hearing notice, which is urban forestry@sfdpw.org. If you'd like to be on the contact list, please type and send your email address in the chat or send an email to urban forestry@sfdpw.org. This public hearing is being held to consider six items regarding tree fines under public works jurisdiction. We intend to go through the items in the order posted on the website and being shared on the screen. My job as the hearing officer is to gather the facts up for the hearing items, listen to your testimonies and help our director of public works make determinations. I will not be making any decisions today. Instead, I will forward the findings from this hearing and make my recommendations to the director. The director will make the final determinations. When the directors determination are made, the department will notify you of them. And if you have, but the department will notify you of them if you have provided contact information. The hearing will proceed as follows for six cases. I'm not seeing the agenda. Okay, there it goes.
Are you able to see?
Okay. Yes, now I see an order number. I'm gonna have to put on my order number 203850. And address 2234 35th Avenue. Order number 203851, address 373 Sixth Avenue. Order number 203852 553 15th Avenue. Order number 203853, address 166 Albion Street. Order number 203854, address 875 Road by Lynn Street. Order number 203855, address 16 West West Avenue. Those are the items that are being. I will end first and present the case. Are we ready for the first order?
Yes, so sorry, cut out a little bit. Am I, am I up?
Yes.
Okay, let me share my screen. All right, so can everyone see the?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And everyone can hear me. All right. Nice. Okay, so my name is Madeline Farquhar and I'm an urban forestry inspector with the Bureau of Urban Forestry with the Department of Public Works, San Francisco. What I'm going to be doing today is giving you an overview of all the cases. But before that, I'm going to talk about the code that dictates why we issue these fines and kind of explain a little bit more about why some of these practices are so harmful and why they merit fines as a part of our code. So this is an administrative hearing to go over fines issued for illegal pruning, illegal removal, and in some cases failure to protect during construction projects. And so I'm just going to go through some of the code so everybody is very clear about, you know, why we issue these fines and what the language is behind our code. So Public Works Code Article 16 is called the Urban Forestry Ordinance. It's what we use on our day to day jobs to dictate these fines. Section 808 is the protection of trees and landscape material. So shall be unlawful for any person to intentionally maliciously or through gross negligence injure or destroy a street tree, any tree on city property, a significant tree or a landmark tree. Removal of a tree under city ordinance or removal in accordance with a permit issued pursuant to section 806810 or 810A of this article is exempt from this prohibition. Also want to go over what the requirements are after a removal, whether illegal or legal. And so, so pretty much whenever we remove a street tree or significant tree, it's required to replace it in kind. So section 806 lays out in the red text, if the department grants a tree removal permit, it shall require that a street tree or trees of equivalent replacement value to the one removed be planted in place of the removed tree or impose an in-loof fee. So if there's for some reason, we can't replace the tree in the same location or in any other location on that property, then we impose an in-loof fee which goes into a tree planting fund for other parts of the city. This covers, um, this is another section, part of section 808. I talk about construction work around street trees and what's required in terms of protection of those trees. And so there's a couple of of the cases that that deal with this. So if excavation, construction or street work is planned within the drip line of a significant tree, a landmark tree or a tree on any street or other publicly owned property, said trees shall be adequately protected. And if any construction work results in the injury or damage of such trees, the responsible parties may be subject to penalties. And so that's the fines we're talking about today. And also quickly want to go over the definition of what we consider an injury and what we consider, you know, a fine worthy offense in terms of damaging trees. So section 802 is the definition of the injury of a tree. Injure or injury shall mean any act which harms or damages a tree, including but not limited to impact, cutting, carving, painting, transplanting or knocking over, and includes but not limited to the following: injurious attachment of any rope, wire, nail, advertising poster or other contrivance to any tree, subject to the provisions of this article. Intentionally or negligently allowing any gaseous liquid or solid substance that is harmful to a tree to come into contact with the tree, setting fire or intentionally or negligently permitting any fire to burn when such fire or the heat there from will injure any part of the tree. Pruning which in and of itself will kill or cause a tree to decline or severing of all or part of the tree, which is highlighted in red because that's typically what we see in the city in terms of some of the practices that I'll describe in just a second. So now we just quickly want to go into best management practices. And this is what we're looking for if, if property owners, private citizens are going to prune their trees. So we require that a certified arborist prunes whenever that's done, but not just that, we need the certified arborist to contact us and give us a work plan for approval. So we know what they're doing. We know who's dealing with the trees. And we, we, we just can make sure to kind of keep tabs on it that way. And so we follow really the standards and set out by the International Society of Arboriculture in terms of pruning trees. So pretty much you don't want to remove more than 25% of the tree during any year. So any one pruning and growing cycle. And you also want to make sure that you're following the proper guidelines in terms of the structure of the tree. So you really want to keep that in mind when you're pruning. A lot of people will prune trees unfortunately back to branches that can't really support the rest of that branch or tree. So foliage on trees is really the most important thing in terms of giving the tree energy and food in order to seal up wounds, to grow more. So whenever you're removing too much of that canopy, that's really slowing down the growth of the tree. It's not allowing it to actually recover from the injury, which pruning in and of itself is an injury to the tree. There's lots of reasons why we prune, but you really want to be very strategic about the way you do it because every time you cut a tree, no matter if it's for structure or aesthetics or anything like that, it is causing an injury to the tree. So you want to do it in a way that it causes the least amount of damage and allows that tree based on how healthy it is, how big it is, where, where it is, to recover from that pruning. So what, what's, the second part of the slide talks about, you know, cutting back the tree to a lateral branch that has enough foliage to then continue to support the tree and to support that limb. So as I go into the next illegal practices about trees, you'll see an example of how and why that's so important. So just talking about illegal practices in the city, topping is one of the most detrimental things you can ever do to a tree. And, and I'll explain just in more detail right now with a couple of slides. So it's basically cutting, cutting back a branch, they call it internotally. So you're not, you're often not cutting all the way back to a secondary branch or a lateral branch. You're just leaving a stub. So you're moving, you know, part or all of the tree and leaving these big stub cuts that are really difficult for a tree to actually heal and come back from. This is just an example of what can happen after you top a tree. So we see this all the time and it is very common for trees whenever they've had 100% of their canopy to be removed, that they kind of spring back and they push out a lot of new growth from those cuts. But unfortunately, this is very typical and it's a stress response. So this kind of foliage that that bounces back, a lot of people look at it and like, hey, you know, the tree's alive, it's going to be fine, it's got more foliage. Unfortunately, it's a major stress response and often those branches are coming out, as you can see in from this picture, at really odd parts of the branch. They're coming out of what they call epicormic sprouts. So it's sprouts that were activated whenever the ends of the branches were trimmed off. It's, it's, it's really when the tree has been told, I, I don't have anything left. I need to send out as much, as many branches as possible so I can start making food for myself again, make, you know, giving myself energy so that it can seal those giant wounds that have been made on the branches. So it's a stress response. This is an example of a tree that eventually died after being topped. And you can see all of those, those sprouts coming out from, from the old cuts. So this is very typical, again, just sending out as much as it possibly can as almost like a last ditch effort to, to, to heal, to seal those wounds. And unfortunately, when that happens, the tree is often taking energy that's been stored in the roots over time and just using it all up. And there are many species in the city that can come back from topping with these, this kind of sprouting foliage and will come back year after year. However, over time, it's very likely that those trees will decline and often die. And there's also other consequences that happen whenever you top trees. So if they do continue on living and continue to make, you know, larger branches, there are some species that can deal with this kind of aggressive pruning. The other problem lies with the long-term effects. So here you can see an old topping cut that has, you know, sent out all those sprouts. And unfortunately, over time, those sprouts have turned into giant branches. And when you have that many branches coming out of the same cut from the same area on the tree, it can often create very weakly attached branches. So most of those branches are only attached with solid wood for a very small amount of their diameter. The rest is included bark. And that, it's basically there's bark in, in the crotch of the branch. So whenever there's force on the out, outer areas of the branch, it can actually pull those branches apart. And I'm sure lots of people have seen this in the city where trees, you can see them split apart. And that's often because either it wasn't, you know, pruned when it was younger and had bad structure or in, in most cases, it's because somebody made a bad pruning cut and they didn't correct the structure in the long run. So it just recreate, it creates a lot of maintenance issues and hazardous situations. This is another example of what can happen with pruning cuts. If the tree cannot produce enough foliage afterwards to close the injury, then it can often allow pathogens decay to take hold in the tree. And just over time, it depends on the species, but over time, these trees often decline and die or just decline to the point where they need to be removed to avoid hazardous situations. So just a couple instances where you see stuff that does look like topping that actually is not something we would find for. So you see in the city, the, the trees in front of City Hall are what we call pilarded trees. So this is, can only be performed on certain species of tree. It's deciduous trees that have a dormant cycle. And it basically involves pruning off the new sprouts every year and it creates these sort of nobbly, you know, ends to the branches. That's a, that's an accepted practice in the city because the, the, the way the tree's cycle works, it doesn't rob so much energy from the tree, but it is different than topping. So it looks similar, but is very different. And then another instance where you might see topping in the city is for high voltage power lines. So PG&E in certain cases where unfortunately perhaps a tree that was too large for the space has been planted. If it comes within 18 inches of those high voltage lines, they, they have to prune the tree back. And so that can result in topping sometimes. However, it is very different from a tree growing around low voltage power lines, communication lines and service drops. We do not prune for those. So trees can often grow around those lines without any issue. They, they don't really pose a major hazard around those lines. We do not prune for them. So just a very quick overview for all of the participants here who might want to know more about what's going on with pruning in the city and why we are issuing these fines and why we're trying to, to ask people to actually let the city prune the trees. So in 2016, a ballot measure was passed. A voter approved ballot measure, which is now turned into the program Street Tree SF. It transferred the responsibility for maintaining street trees and repairing tree related sidewalk damage from property owners to the city. And the passing of this measure created Street Tree SF. And it's basically a $19 million set aside from the city's general fund to fund the maintenance of street trees. So in preparation for this, we created a tree census. A tree census was done and it inventoried all of the nearly 125,000 trees in the city. This is just a map of all of the street trees in the city. And then with that, we, the census data, it's being used to populate a routine proactive tree pruning schedule for the city's nearly, nearly 125,000 street trees. The data has allowed us to prioritize areas of the city where the need for tree maintenance is the highest, allowing us to allocate resources to those areas first. And that, that is kind of what you see on the, the screen is the red squares going all the way to green, which is the least. And it's just important to note that safety is really our number one in priority in terms of pruning. That's mainly why, you know, we're maintaining the street trees. Let's see. So pruning and removals are underway already. It's been going on since July 1st of 2017 when it took effect. Since the start of that program, about 22% of the, who's 24%, sorry, it's gone up. Of the total tree maintenance needs have been addressed by contractors and city arborists. And more than 30,000 trees have been pruned and more than 3,000 at-risk trees have been removed. And this is just a slide. If you want to know more about the schedule, you can always reach out to us or you can go to streettreeSF.org to type in your address and, and find out when we're going to be in that area of the city. And we also want to make it clear that if you believe there is a hazard or if, if you would like an inspection of your tree to see if it can be expedited, it's very rare that we can do that outside of the schedule, but we're not going to ignore property owners and residents who have a concern about a tree and will always come out and take a look for you. So before crews begin the maintenance work, we're always trying to, you know, let people know what's going on. So we, we hand out door hangers informing people about the work and the timeframe of the work when it will happen. When the crews are out in the field doing Street Tree SF work signage with the program logo are displayed. All outreach material is in English, Chinese and Spanish and has contact information to reach public works site with any questions or concerns. And then lastly, before I start on the first order, just want to tell everybody about our Street Tree Care class. We offer this and when attended, a reduction in the fine issued for illegal pruning or removal of street trees can usually be applied. And we, we basically just want to go over the benefits of trees and why it's important to prune them properly and take care of them. That they're a public benefit and considered green infrastructure in the city. We talk more about the, you know, Street Tree SF program and the, the class fee is $197 and it goes to the same adopted tree fund where the in-loof fees go. So I thought I'll just launch into the, the first order. So order number 203850 for 2334 35th Avenue. An appeal from the property owner for the fine issued for illegal pruning of one street tree adjacent to 2334 35th Avenue. And the fine levied for the illegal pruning is $2,193. And it's a very straightforward case of illegal topping, just kind of like how I described. This is a small stature because it's been kept small Metro Ceteris Excelsa or New Zealand Christmas tree. And you can see what it looked like before. And what our inspector found after the pruning. So this just falls within our category for injury of a tree. And because of that, we levy the fine of $2,193. So that is pretty much it for this case.
If there is a member of the public who would like to speak, please raise your hand and we'll allow you to speak. The property owner or someone from the community on order number 203851, go ahead and raise your hand in the, in the room by, if you dialed in, I believe it's star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. And Cerise will correct me if I have that.
It's that, it's actually order number 203850.
Okay. And it is raised, to raise your hand, the attendees would need to star nine if they dialed in. Correct?
Oh. It, it, yes, that's correct. Star nine.
Okay. All right. So I'm looking in, we have there is, I believe it's Arlette Hanson. Cerise, do you want to?
Am I, okay.
No.
Oh, no.
It looks like.
You want me to do it?
I, I can do it. Our, we have to promote you to a panelist to, because of the version of Zoom you're using. So go ahead. Whenever you're ready, unmute your, your mic and go ahead. You'll have three minutes once we get you going. Arlette, you're, you're ready. You're live. Hi, Arlette. There you go. Can you hear us? We can see you. We just can't hear you. I'm guessing from the phone that you're going to call in. Well, we see you, Arlette. It looks like you're having some technical challenges. We'll just give you a moment here to get that going.
I also have a, a photo that was sent in, I think by Arlette of the tree in its current state. So I might just, I could share the screen. If, I'll wait until, until I get the confirmation from, from her.
Okay. And Arlette, if you have the agenda and you want to dial in with your phone, that way we can hear you, that's an option as well. Because we see you, we just don't hear you. You can also type comments in the chat. Could you possibly wave at the screen and let us know if you're hearing us at all? Okay.
Here, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you. Yay.
Okay, good. Here's our lead Hanson.
Okay. Hi, hi, Miss Hanson. Hello? You, you're, you are, you're, we're, we're ready to hear you. You have three minutes. We'll go ahead and start.
Yeah, three minutes. Go ahead, tell your story. Oh, before she begins, you didn't include the picture that we sent yesterday that Madeline said would be included about what the tree looks like today.
Okay, Madeline can put that up. She did get your, she did get the, the picture. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Mom. You have to speak to the phone.
Sir, I didn't know any story about the nature of the trees and I don't feel guilty at all and I will not do again. And I have did that because I am, I am legally blind. I cannot see and the tree was facing my, like if it was against the window and I could not see anything, natural light, no, no natural light. I'm confined in my house for so long and I cannot see, I cannot distinguish anything. But there, when I cut the tree, finally I could see the street a little bit, distinct something. And the light came through my dining room that I was sitting all alone and give light to my house.
You've been taking care of the tree for 48 years. Forty-eight years.
Come on, go on, go. So I have, I, I am shocked that I did something bad. I didn't know the tree was bad like that when I took care for 48 years. I took care of that tree and it went slowly, slowly. And if you're lucky, so the last picture, the inspector saw it was, it's beautiful. I like the tree. I like the trees. I know they give oxygen, but it's a matter of seeing. I could not see anything, nothing. I'm confined inside of the room there, no light, no natural light at all. And the emotions, and I today, I am, I am grieving the death of my son that I have brain cancer. And I got that deal. I was wondering what it's all about. What I cannot afford that thing.
It's 100.
So I want to, I am, I don't feel guilty now. I will not do again, that for sure. I'm so sorry about that, but that's the way it is. I follow the law all the time. By the way, that tree was put by, all those trees were set by my son at the community service. The first week that it was planted, some person broke the branch and we put at the garden. We planted that branch at the garden and you should see how the tree is big, huge. And I never even put a branch on that tree and it planted and we have two big tree now of the same one. It's not that I don't love the tree. I do love the tree. But it's a matter of seeing something on the, from the street, from the light in my house. I am confined inside. I am 19, nine years old and legally blind. It's barely, I have two points of nothing at all. So I wish you to understand that this, make that thing a warning. I will not do again. to understand that this, make that thing a warning. I will not do again. Please.
Thank you, Mrs. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can, can you see my screen?
All right.
Robin.
Does the hearing officer have any questions for the appellant or for Buff before we move to the next, uh, next item?
Um, yes, Madeline, um, that's the tree. It with the leaves now, um, look like it would survive.
Um, Metro Ceteris Excelsa, the New Zealand Christmas tree are a species that do respond, I would say, better to topping than other species. Like they can come back. But unfortunately, because of the way the, this basically creates a really high maintenance situation where it now needs to either be restructured pruning or continue continually topped. So I don't have like a lot of confidence in this tree's long-term ability to survive. It's likely that it will kind of just struggle along. It could, it could survive for years. But the the long-term maintenance issue is kind of more concerning for us in terms of this topping because if the property changes hands and Ms. Hanson does stop maintaining the tree, these, where these sprouts come out will eventually become hazardous situations because they're all sprouting out from the same spot, kind of like what I showed in the beginning of the, the presentation. So yes, I think it will survive, but there's some other long-term consequences that we have to deal with.
Understood. Um, that's it for me.
Okay, then we will go on to the next order. Go ahead, go ahead. Madeline.
Okay, so this was the order number 203851. Uh, and this, this order is actually going to be postponed because the appellant couldn't make the hearing date. So I, I am, if it's okay, I'm just going to skip to the next order.
Okay.
So this is the next order, uh, order number 203852 553 15th Avenue. An appeal from the property owner for the fine issued for failure to protect one street tree adjacent to 553 15th Avenue. The fine levied for failure to protect the street tree is $2,193. This is the tree. This is the, the Arbutus Marina, the strawberry tree. Out front of 553 15th Avenue. I, I knew about this tree before this particular incident because the property owner did, did originally apply for a removal permit to remove the tree due to construction issues. I, I believe it was utility clearances and also because the, the tree was in poor health. When I originally did the, the inspection, I did find some insect issues, but I, I would not classify the trees being in poor health. It's actually doing quite well, especially for this type of species in this neighborhood. So we eventually denied the tree and it was appealed. It went to a hearing and the hearing officer did uphold our denial and we were tasked with reviewing the tree after six months and kind of monitoring the tree to make sure it didn't have further decline in health. And at that point we might reassess it, but after I did a second inspection, determined it was still healthy. And eventually the, the order was issued to retain the tree. So on another inspection, there was just more reports of, you know, construction ongoing. Oh, sorry to back up a little bit. Before this inspection in September, uh, there were reports that the tree wasn't being protected during construction. So I'm in contact with the property owner and just, you know, made it clear. Like you need to have the protective border around the tree, explaining just, you know, the ins and outs of, of making sure the tree is protected during construction. And we, we, we do this all the time. You know, it's, it's typical that you, you need to make sure that the tree is protected while work is going on around it. And so I came on reports that there was just more construction happening and there was some concerned folks on the block. And when I, when I got there, I did find that unfortunately the, the concrete contractor EF Gomez had severed at least three large diameter roots. Within two feet of the tree's trunk. So that area is what we call the critical root zone. We really try to, to not mess with it as much as possible. It is very difficult in, in urban environments to not work in the critical root zone. But it is imperative that contractors and property owners make sure to contact us when they're going to, um, to discuss root pruning before doing it. Because there are certain types of root pruning that can be very dangerous and also just really detrimental for the tree's health. So this is the sidewalk before and then during construction, which is why the, the roots were pruned. There was uplift in the sidewalk and often we do, we, we do approve root pruning in situations where sidewalk repair needs to occur. However, I would not have approved pruning of the roots of this large of diameter. It's about three to five inches. I'm going to show some pictures. It's a little hard to see, but I tried to circle the roots so you can get a better idea of how big the roots are. And you can see from the, the previous slide how close they are to the tree's trunk. So here's just some pictures of the roots. And while I don't believe that this tree is imminent hazard, often if you, if you prune roots that close to the tree, it can be hazardous because it, it has the potential to destabilize the entire tree. Cause these are the large structural roots near, near the base of the tree. We call them buttress roots. However, there were roots intact on other sides of the tree. So, um, we try to make the determination. You know, if there's, if there's enough roots intact, um, to not create a hazard, then we're not going to post the tree for removal. But I just made it clear that I'll need to have to find for this kind of thing and, um, need to monitor the tree to see if it declines because of this root pruning. It is just some major wounds that the tree, which is already a little stressed out from various reasons. That will, you'll have to use energy to seal up these wounds and they're quite large. So that's pretty much it for this one.
Okay, is the, um, a member of, there's Melissa. Um, you have your hand up. Melissa, uh, go ahead and unmute your phone and go ahead. If you have something to share. And you need to have us put it up on the screen. Just let me know.
No, I think that you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
I think, I think Madeline took the adequate pictures. I would go back probably to reference the other photo that kind of shows the raised concrete. And what you see is you see this kind of bulbous part of the root that went over the cement. And so when EF Gomez, um, the company we hired to, um, replace the raised sidewalk, we chose to go ahead and pay for that ourselves. What you see there to the right of it is also the gas line that comes into our property. And so when they removed that piece of cement, they actually, that part going over it, they didn't touch it at all. There wasn't one cut into that. They really carefully actually pulled that out. But it wasn't until I came outside and I saw that they had cut part of the tree on the root. And I said, I, I mean, I made sure in many, many ways, even with my general contractor, that make sure you guys know, you know, don't cut any part of this tree. We have to call public works if you cut any part of the tree. And I let them know this and they said, yeah, we understand. Look, it's going to be fine. Don't worry about it. We're just going to fix where it's raising the sidewalk. And EF Gomez works all over the city. And I trusted them because they've been all throughout the city that I found them because they worked on another property near another home that I own. And, uh, you know, when I came out, I saw that they had cut part of the root and because I have a neighbor two doors down that files a complaint against us for every single thing that she is concerned about. And so the city does come out on a regular basis. Sorry, I don't know. Your trying to have me install flash. Did I just lose you guys?
No, we hear you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. We still have one minute.
So I mean, I spoke to them and I told them, you know, don't cut anything. So it wasn't, we, we did not act maliciously. We were not intentional in any, doing anything. Anytime Madeline came out and told us to protect the tree, I immediately went to my contractor and I said, listen, the city said you need to do this. I asked them to do it. He wanted to care of it. If it wasn't the way Madeline asked us to it, I went back to them and asked them to fix it. Anytime the city asked us to do something, we did it. We never ignored any requests of theirs. So we weren't malicious. We weren't intentional in trying to hurt this tree. In fact, we've given the root area at the base more space by 10 inches to grow even more. So in the future, it's not going to raise the sidewalk hopefully ever again, because we've given it a lot more space to grow and loosened it up around that. Um, if you were to take a picture of it now, you would see that we've given it so much more space and it's not growing up against cement.
Okay.
I just want to say really quickly. So I, my understanding was that EF Gomez, they're the ones that cut it. I didn't cut it. I didn't ask them to cut it. They cut it. And, um, so I understand the city's policy is that they're not the ones to be fined. I'm the one to be fined. But I, I'm just appealing this because we did everything we thought we were supposed to do. We tried in every single way to be careful with this tree. And, you know, we take care of the tree and we're putting our proposal up together for the arborist who will be cleaning out all of the dead stuff in the center of the tree from the risk infestation. Uh, and we'll be submitting that in a week or so. So we're doing everything we can considering now that city has ruled that we have to keep the tree. So I just feel that this fine is unfair because we've done everything we thought we were supposed to do. And we were not malicious in anything we were trying to do. We've been trying to work with Madeline, um, in every way that she's told us to.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Okay. Does the hearing officer have any questions for Buff or shall we move to the next, um, the next?
We can move to the next.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is order number 203853. An appeal from the property owner for the fine issued for illegal removal for one street tree adjacent to 166 Albion Street. The fine levied for the illegal removal is $18,800. So this is a photo of the tree before it was removed. Um, it's a large, mature Melaleuca winarifolia or flax leaf paper bark tree. The reason why the, the fine is a different amount than our typical fine because, is because when a tree obviously exceeds the value of our base fine, we often appraise the tree for its actual value and issue a fine for that, especially if it's been fully removed or destroyed. So this is just a snapshot of what, what we, what we use is the guide for plant appraisal, the 10th edition. And this was a 31 inch DBH flax leaf paper barks was a very large stature. Melaleuca winarifolia. And the way we appraise trees is just basically calculating up their value and then, you know, deducting any value for defects that we find. So, um, I do believe that this fine was lowered from the original amount based on defects that were found in the tree by the property owner's gardener prior to the, prior to the removal. So, you know, past photos were taken into account to try and get an accurate valuation of the tree. Uh, it came out to be 18,800. So that's just a little background for the appraisal values that we do. This was reported to us, I think it was through a service request that the tree is being removed. Um, and these are just images of the trees being removed during the act and I believe the, the, one of the reasonings behind the tree removal was that it was causing some issues with the the service drops or the, the electrics on the outside of the building. You can kind of see, I don't know if I can zoom in on this, probably not, but from the side of the blue building, you can see that the, the wires have been sort of pulled off the building. So this was cited as one of the reasons, um, I believe that they're originally going to just prune the tree. And then the, the contractor decided due to health reasons and also because of this electric issue that they are just going to remove it. But unfortunately, that's just, unfortunately, you know, you need a permit to remove a tree. And based on past pictures, it's, this is not a situation where the issues or the hazard warranted the true removal. This tree was sustainable. It could have been left there and, um, the electrics issue dealt with pruning. So, um, we believe it wasn't illegal, it wasn't an illegal removal and could have been avoided. And just to point out that recently our inspector dealing with this fine did visit the property and it appears that the electric issues have not been dealt with. So that's just something we wanted to, to bring up with the, the appellant about why they haven't been dealt with. But they have replaced the tree with, with a new tree, um, which would be part of the requirement if they hadn't already done it. And this property was shortly put on the market after the tree was removed. So the, the property owner has changed. But I do believe that the, the original property on the appellant is, is in attendance. So that's, that's pretty much it for this one.
Okay. And does the appellate want to speak? You can raise your hand if you'd like. There you go. That's Carl. Carl's using an older version, so we'll promote you to panelist Carl. All right, Carl, just go ahead and unmute.
Again, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, sorry, Madeline, do you happen to have the pictures that I shared with Stephen months back on the, the damage to the tree or the entanglement of the electrical wires?
Yes, let me, let me grab it real quick. I'm going to stop sharing and then I'll pull it back up.
Okay.
If you have, um, Madeline, if, if, if Carl has it on his screen, he can share it as well.
I apologize. I didn't come prepared to that.
No, that's okay. No, that's.
That's okay. I think I, I can grab it. I believe I have it. Just hang on just one moment.
And a minor FYI, but the picture you're showing is not the tree that was removed. Like that's the neighbor's tree. The one in front of the brick.
Oh, it's the one behind it. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, they're similar trees. So probably six dozen the other, but while she's pulling that up, I mean, pretty similar to the case before. This is one where really, you know, I can't defend my own ignorance and I apologize that I wasn't aware of all the great materials that you guys presented at the outset of this webinar. But there really wasn't any intentional malice or negligence on my part with the removal here. Uh, I'm sure Stephen with the forestry department has our discussions on file and hopefully those are part of what you guys have been able to review in advance. But this was really just a situation where A, the electrical wiring, to clarify, that's not attached to my house. It's the neighbor's wiring, which is part of the problem. We repeatedly kind of tried to warn the neighbor like, hey, the tree on our property is entangled with your wires. Can you do something about that? Can you look into that? When I first bought the house a couple of years ago, we reached out to the city through 311. Again, apologies. I didn't realize there was a, a different or direct line to the forestry department and they responded and said, this isn't our problem to fix the electrical wiring issue. Contact PG&E, which we tried to do several times for several years and PG&E never came out to look at the tree or prune the tree or do anything. We put the house on the market while it was on the market, right? We were getting repeated requests for like, look, you're going to need to fix this. You're going to need to address it or you won't be able to sell the property. The neighbors wild, wires are entangled in the tree. So we called a So we called a, an arborist tree pruner to come out over the weekend to look at trimming the tree. And that's where kind of the house of cards fell apart. There's a picture of, you know, some years before. Somebody seems to have set like a fire in the tree. So the tree was. Not exactly in the greatest state and felt like it was already in the process of dying. I'm not a professional, but. You know, these are all the things that kind of went into the decision-making process as it went down. It was entangled in electrical wires. We tried to have it pruned. And then when we actually had the tree trimmer show up, unfortunately. I was not at the property like while all this happened. So it was confusion over the phone, but they basically called and said, look, there's no safe way for us to prune around the electrical issue. Like we, we think you need to take the tree down and they were pointing out that it was already damaged and. And could collapse. So they just proposed taking it down entirely. I gave them the green light on the phone to go ahead and proceed with taking it down and, and really the rest is history. So again, yeah, really wasn't a case of, of malice on my part. Had I known the, the process of getting a permit, I would have gone through it, but. You know, it's my belief that we would have probably had the same outcome here, but the tree had existing damage and needed to come down. But yeah, that's the, the situation on my side. Are there any questions I can answer?
Hearing Officer Park, do you have any questions for the appellate before we move to the next order? And, and, and thank you, Carl.
I guess minor point to add, yes, Madeline noted, like, you know, certainly less than ideal that the tree came down and, and we obviously immediately moved to have it replaced with one of the, the city approved trees before we even knew that. There was a complaint filed with the city. So we were trying to kind of take the best court. Hopefully there's evidence of good intent here.
Okay, thank you.
I think Robin might be frozen. Oh, here.
Yeah, we lost her video and Cerise here on mute.
Yes, I'm here. Oh, there's Robin. Okay. Robin, were you able to hear?
Robin.
You're on mute.
I actually, my internet went up, but I did hear both the appellate and. Madeline, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
All right, Madeline, go ahead with the next order, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I believe this is the second to last one. This is order number two zero three eight five four. An appeal from the property owner for the fine issued for illegal removal of one street tree adjacent to eight seventy eight Rhode Island Street. The fine levied for the illegal removal is two thousand one hundred and twenty two dollars. I believe this was also reported to us from a service request and it was. Believe while the, the property was under construction. So this is just the tree before. And then the tree after it was removed. And so the fine was issued for illegal removal because there's no removal permit on file. And I did want to note that as part of the fine being issued, we did give a warning for. Tree, tree protection during construction because I believe there were some. Some injuries to the lower limbs of this other tree. Or perhaps the, the large machinery was getting really close. So we always just try to, you know, let people know you really need to put tree protection up. It's required and we can, we will find you. You know, if, if, if we come back and it's not, it's not up during, in a timely man, manner. And just wanted to make note of that as well. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, is someone the appellate? Okay, there she, that's Jeanette. Go ahead, Jeanette.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Jeanette, we can hear you.
Hi, I just wanted to say first, I'm obviously really sorry about the tree. This unfortunately occurred during the early stages of COVID and we were trying to contact DPW just to figure out what we could do. I did share a photo just a couple of minutes ago to show kind of a more recent. Photo of what the tree was looking like before it was actually removed. I'm, I'm assuming you guys can look at that. Maybe later on, but. We'd love to plant a tree in the rear yard or figure out some other way that we could kind of make this whole. It was basically confusion that happened between the contractor that was working at the site at the time and we were trying to stay away. Because it was, again, it was super early during the COVID when. We weren't, we weren't trying to be at the job site. And they were, it was, it was a weird time because at first, like the city had said, no construction, then there was construction and. It was all these things going on. It was just, I mean, no one's ever, we've never been in this position. So it was just a lot going on.
Okay, does the hearing officer have any questions or is there anything more you'd like to add, Jeanette?
No, I think I'm okay.
Actually.
Go ahead.
That photo that.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
So the photo that you just spoke of.
I just sent it to Urban Forestry. Marcus and then I'm, don't know how to say his name. C E R I S E, Cerise.
It's Cerise and she's the clerk here.
Cerise, that's me.
So Jeanette, if you have, do you have it in front of you on your screen? We can allow you to share your screen if you'd like rather than, or if Madeline can probably pull it up from the, or someone, but. We could, we could share your screen if you'd like.
I'd rather not share my screen just because I have a lot of work.
Okay, okay. All right. I'll, well, Madeline, do you think you can get it up? To the.
Yeah, Cerise, if you want to forward it to me, I can, I can pop it up there.
I would have to look back through my email and everything. You say you, you emailed it or?
Yeah, it came in thirteen minutes ago on my side. It looks, and I put in the subject line eight seven eight Rhode Island Street and the hearing number.
Okay, well, I will, I will look for that and then I will have it forwarded to the hearing officer. Okay.
Question for Madeline. My internet was cutting in and out earlier when you were talking about. The tree and the damage. Did you say there was some damage caused to the tree next to the tree that was removed?
I need to confirm that because I wasn't the inspector dealing with this case, but on the fine issued, it, it did say to avoid further damage. To lower limbs. So I took that language as assuming that there had been damage done, but I need, I would need to confirm it.
I, I just for the record, I was not aware of that. There is protection up. I. There is a bus stop right there, which we do have a lot of the issues with unfortunately right outside our building, but. Yeah, there's no damage to that tree. That tree was, has always been healthier than the other one for whatever reason.
Sure. Yeah, we can confirm. It might just be like superficial damage to the cambium of the, of a lower branch or something like that. Sometimes it's hard to spot, but. It might have just been a warning to, to avoid damage in the future. Just need to confirm.
Okay, the hearing officer would like to add any other question to the next item.
Okay, I'm, I'm, yes.
You're, you're done as well?
On this photo that Madeline's sharing, I don't really see tree protection on the tree that's still standing behind the porta potty. So that's why I was wondering.
There is tree protection now.
I'm sorry, I was trying to get mine up.
And I can, I can follow up about this case as well.
All right, then I will follow up with you, Madeline, then. We could go to the next order then.
Okay, this is the final order. It's order number two zero three eight five five. An appeal from the property owner for the fine issued for illegal removal of one significant tree on private property. At sixteen Merced Avenue and the fine levied for the illegal removal is two thousand one hundred and twenty two dollars. And I'll just explain quickly what a significant tree is as opposed to a street tree. Significant trees are trees that fall within ten feet of the public right of way. So they're on private property, but they have. Protection under the urban forestry ordinance. So similar to a street tree, except for we don't typically prune them. Or we don't print them, but they are, they do need a, a removal permit and. They need approval for pruning. So the property owner, I think it was again, reported with a service request, property owner removed a significant multi-stem holly tree without a permit. The public right of way here is twelve feet from the curb. So the tree falls within ten feet of the public right of way and is considered significant. Significant trees also have to meet a certain requirement for size. So it's not just any tree. It's not like a tiny. You know, newly planted tree. Eventually that will become a significant tree, but. Believe this met the requirement for DBH diameter at breast height. So kind of the trunk, the trunk diameter. If you add all the trunks up and then I also believe it met it because of canopy size. So here's the tree before. And then here is it removed. I believe the, the property was, was put on the market after this occurred and. Just want to make it clear that. With all of these cases, a lot of times. We, we just let people know that it's, it is the property owner's responsibility to know the city ordinance and codes before they embark on these projects. So just making sure they do their due diligence to follow up, you know, with, with, with all the requirements to remove or make, you know, changes on their frontage. It's also important because I think quite a few of these cases for this hearing. Dealt with tree work that was done not by certified arborists. And it is required that certified arborists do tree work in the city. And, and as you can see with a lot of these instances. It falls unfortunately back on the property owner. When contractors are working out of class and they're doing things like root pruning or tree removal or tree pruning when they're not actually certified to do that work. So in those situations, we, we do find the property owner, but then it's up to the property owner to kind of dispute it with their contractor. So yeah, we, we receive calls all the time about what to do. In these situations and we just want to make it clear that is the responsibility of the property owner to determine like what is required for these. And so we're gonna require a replacement here. And just making it clear it's separate from the fine consideration. And that is it for this one.
Okay, we, looks like we have Olga Pressler from the appellate. Go ahead and. Unmute if you.
Yes, hi. This is actually Val Pressler. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
All right, perfect. Olga's actually stuck on meeting, so I'm covering for her. So first of all, we'd like to obviously extend our apologies in regards to the apparent improper handling of the tree removal process. And the fact that the tree had to be removed. We're property owners in San Francisco who care and love our community. And believe that all planted trees, plants and flowers bring beauty, purpose. Uniqueness and tranquility to our city and its green movement. That said, we do believe we have a valid, somewhat valid, valid excuse for the tree removal. And hopefully these reasons can be considered and valued. Throughout our ownership of the property, we had various issues with the street. Which unfortunately caused a lot of issues with, you know, the sprinkler system and stuff like that. In twenty ten, our. Landscaper who was working on the property said that the tree was rotting and decaying from inside out. Throughout the year in various times, I don't recall exactly what times of the year, but it would go dead. So we had to do a lot of maintenance and it would kind of spring back to life. We had a lot of branches fall on the pedestrian walkway and we did have a few complaints from neighbors or pedestrians that said that, you know. Some branches were hanging low and, you know, in a way of their walkway. So that was definitely a public hazard. When the property was placed on the market and we laid down the grass, the landscaper discovered that the roots. Of the tree broke the underground sprinkler system. Which cost us over a thousand dollars to, to fix that. We obviously wanted, you know, to fix the issue. We wanted to make the tree. You know, survive. And we asked our landscaper who was working on the property at that time, what could be done? And in his opinion, he said that there was nothing we could do to save it. So we decided, you know, what would be the other option to do? And he said, you know, we can remove the tree. And that would fix the issue. Obviously in hindsight, we wish we would have done more research. We weren't aware of the regulations and rules concerning the tree removals of the property. And obviously had we known that it can be removed like this, we would have, you know. Done it differently. It was not our intention to remove the tree illegally. So we obviously feel really bad about it. And ignorance is not an excuse. We should have done more research and next time. After this meeting, after all your, you know, valuable, valuable information, we know this, the next time around, we definitely. Will have more stuff to research and ask and do, do it the proper way. We hope that these facts can be taken into account and that you guys can. Show leniency in our case. We were also, you know, working through the COVID nineteen pandemic and a lot of. People were unreachable. We actually did call the friends of the forestry, I believe, the, the place that plants new trees. And they said that they were so busy that it would be twenty twenty one that they can even consider our case. So that's pretty much it for us, you know. Once again, it wasn't our intention to do it on purpose. We're sorry and hopefully, hopefully you guys can, you know, give us a little bit of a break here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madeline or Robin, did you have any questions for the appellate or anything to? Add or follow up on?
I did not.
I do not either.
Okay. This, just giving the. The community any, give a minute or so if anybody left that wants to comment. And then if you'd like to go ahead and close out the. The hearing, Robin, go ahead and do that. And then we will end the recording for members of the community. The recording will be available online. In about twenty four hours.
Anybody? Do you guys see anybody? I'm serious.
Giving one last, one last shot to anyone here before we close the hearing.
Okay.
I would say go ahead, Officer Park.
Okay, so if there are no more comments for this items on this hearing, I'll now close the items and we'll make my recommendations to the director. Question from Clint and Cerise, is there a time limit for my? Recommendations?
Usually we say with like within two weeks or so, you would give your decision to the director and then the director will give it to us.
So I will.
I mean, your recommendation, I'm sorry, your recommendation.
I'll make the recommendations shortly and I'll make that two weeks time. Thank you. I think that's it for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.